His banner o'er us!
Sing the victory song at last. The fight is on! The cross is drawn, the train is en route to the Lord's feet. And victory will assure. The buck of the lamb, the emperor God is in the pew and his strength unto the end it will. The fight is on, oh Christian soldier. And face the faces turn away. With hearts believing and colors screaming, their mighty dog in chains today. The fight is on, but be not weary. His walking and his life all passed. It's not before us, it's banner o'er us. We'll sing the victory song at last. The Lord is the name that we'll search to victory. The bow of the cross stands in this for time. His glorious name in every nation of the earth. The Lord will pray, the God of peace is God. The fight is on, oh Christian soldier. And face the faces turn away. The love is strong, the glory is free. The fight is on, but be not weary. His walking and his life all passed. It's not before us, it's banner o'er us. We'll sing the victory song at last.
Good scene tonight. We've invited a lot more people to come. I hope they still come because we're gonna have a good time. Whoever's here, amen. And Scott's not gonna settle down. I guarantee that when it happens, we're gonna have a good day of terms with you, O Lord.
Heavenly Father, Lord, we just give you thanks for this opportunity to be in your house tonight. Thank you, Lord, for this group of people. Thank you for this special meeting. Thank you for the preacher who's gonna be here to deliver the word. And, Lord, I just pray that we get something out of what you have for us, that we would take it and put it into our hearts and in our lives and apply it, and that you would be glorified throughout the process, Lord. And we just thank you for your goodness and grace to us tonight. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Hymn number 200.
My grandson's favorite song.
The friend who is hard to be. His love is ever true. I love you, God, who lifted me. And love is grace and good for you. Save by his love to die. Save by his heart's surprise. Tigers are sweet and my joy is complete. For I'm saved, saved, saved. He saves you and God, every sin and harm. Segures my soul each day. My relief is strong, on his mighty arm. Your help will guide me all the way. Save by his heart we fight. Save by his heart we survive. My death wish stay and my joy is complete. For I'm saved, saved, saved. With glory in me here all alone. And love is ever true. I come to me and I'll lead you home. To live with me eternally. Save by his heart we fight. Save by his heart we survive. My death wish stay and my joy is complete. For I'm saved, saved, saved.
Hymn number 496, 496.
Oh, yeah.
I heard an old story. That a saint remained from glory. And he gave his life on Calvary to save a wretch white meat. I heard about his story. And his grace was right and told me. And I repented of my sins and watched the victory. Oh victory in Jesus, my Savior forever. He sought me and pardoned me with his believing in God. He loved me and I knew him. And all my love is due him. He dumps me to victory beneath the cleansing flood. I heard about his mission. It was built for me in glory. Now we beg to bow by streets of gold beyond the crystal sea. And now the angels singing and over dancing story. And some sweet day I'll sing out there as song of victory. Oh victory in Jesus, my Savior forever. He sought me and pardoned me with his believing in God. He loved me and I knew him. And all my love is due him. He dumps me to victory beneath the cleansing flood.
You may be seated, you may be seated, so let rest just a minute here. Just sing a couple more songs. It's good to have each one of you here tonight. We don't have a bulletin for this. It'll be different on Sunday anyway. Just invite folks out. Tomorrow at four o'clock, we'll have a potluck here at the house. And then at six o'clock, we'll have a evening service. So that everyone's home in time, not to have that as an excuse for not to come Sunday. And then Sunday morning, the normal services, ten, eleven, and six o'clock. And after the six o'clock, there'll be pizza in the house. It's like tradition, tradition. They have to have pizza after the last night at church or something like that. But anyway.
Bacon.
I hope you can make it. I hope you can come and be a blessing to them.
Potluck, okay, four p.m.?
Bring someone with you, by the way. We like, we always encourage people to come the first night because if you come the last night, you'll be filled with regrets. I wish I had dinner. But when you come the first night, you'll know what you can expect and it'll be a blessing to you. So we're excited about that. I'll introduce Joel in just a minute. But just remember, invite folks out. Be a blessing to others and come here for a blessing yourself. You know, people, it is funny. People today are kind of wandering around. There's a great deal of division in our country and people don't really know what to do. It's just odd to me that people won't do what's worked for all those years in the past. You know, when you go to church, and we sang about security and even just singing. I looked this morning at, what, it was about one o'clock this morning? I was all alone at the airport for a while. Then some people came in and I was just looking for Joel's big singing. I pretty soon saw it coming down the track. What did your day start to in the morning?
Um, three.
Back there. That's one o'clock here. So we're gonna have a good time. I hope you enjoy it. I hope I'll do something for you. Now, I don't know of another announcement, so we'll do a couple more songs and then I'll introduce my friend.
Amen.
Okay, let's all stand again. Hymn number 206, 206.
Wonderful grace of Jesus, greater than all my sin. Our shoulders run through his smile in pleasure was raised within. Taking the weight of burden and setting the spirit free. For the wonderful grace of Jesus reaches me. Wonderful the monstrous grace of Jesus, deeper than the mighty rolling sea. Higher than the mountains, stronger than the fountain, also facing grace for me and thee. Brighter than the scope of light which stretches it. Greater than all this shame. Oh magnify the precious name of Jesus, praise his name. Wonderful grace of Jesus reaching to all the lost. And in the empty pardon said to the uttermost. Change every Lord of sunken, giving me never thee. For the wonderful grace of Jesus reaches me. Wonderful the monstrous grace of Jesus, greater than the mighty rolling sea. Higher than the mountains, darker than the fountain, also facing grace for me and thee. Brighter than the scope of light which stretches it. Higher than all this shame. Oh magnify the precious name of Jesus, praise his name. Wonderful grace of Jesus reaching the most divine. By his great power taking you not here shy. Precious and pleased in heaven for all eternity. And the wonderful grace of Jesus reaches me. Wonderful the monstrous grace of Jesus, deeper than the mighty rolling sea. Higher than the mountains, darker than the mountain, also facing grace for me and thee. Brighter than the scope of light which stretches it. Greater than all my sin and shame. Oh magnify the precious name of Jesus, praise his name.
Hymn number 498, 498.
Sing the wondrous love of Jesus in his mercy and his grace. In my nations, brother and blessing, here bring and bless the place. When we all get to heaven, what a day of rejoicing and joy. When we all see Jesus, we'll sing and shout the victory. One day he walked out, and a rock and path, when the clouds will overspend the sky. But when traveling days are over, not a shadow of a sign. When we all get to heaven, what a day of rejoicing and joy. When we all see Jesus, we'll sing and shout the victory. Let us stand, be true and faithful, trusting, serving every day. Just one glimpse of healing glory will the door to life be opened. When we all get to heaven, what a day of rejoicing and joy. When we all see Jesus, we'll sing and shout the victory.
You may be seated, dude. It's time to tell you everything to do is one of my best friends. You've known me since a long time. I know him because of Brother James. And I have some really good friends that way. There's some people that just form a bond in you. And I don't know if it's both ways, but I'll tell you what, this is more than a brother to me. This is family to me. And I look forward to seeing his smile as he came down that narrow corridor last night. And we have all kinds of things to smile about. One of the blessings of always being able to sing praises to God and then enjoy the word, guys, that's preached by a servant of God. And I'm so glad each one of you's come today. And don't get discouraged if you invite people and they didn't come. You know what? They had the chance to come. And sometimes the word goes out and people start realizing, hey, I'm missing something. And that'll be a blessing. That's what we want. We want to be a blessing to people.
Right.
This isn't praise one for another, nothing like that. It is to be a blessing to each other. And I'm so thankful to call Joel friend, his brother, my friend. His dad is in heaven right now, my friend. And your dad and my dad are probably comparing those two. And then his mom, his dear mom. And it's soon getting to a really older generation. I'm not prepared for that. You'd think I'd be able to grow up, grow old. But I'm just so pleased to have Brother Joel come. He's my friend. He's got a blessing and a burden for you, so come on, bro.
Amen.
All right. Well, I hope you don't need a translator this evening because I'm not gonna be able to speak anything but southern. So that's just the way that is.
You're bilingual. The word be a poor bilingual.
He's gotta be bilingual like that. But, you know, I do, I do wanna say this. Isaiah forty, that's probably gonna be my main up here. But Isaiah forty, you know, if you guys, if you live out here, how many of you, this is your home. This is Montana's home. Anybody that Montana is not your home, obviously nobody trying to back Bart. And you are, I think, you know, it's easy to get accustomed to your surroundings. And you guys, you guys have unbelievably beautiful scenery. Unbelievably large mountains, snow on the top. I'm so grateful that the snow is not down here. Stay up there. But when I looked at those mountains today, again, coming back over. Isaiah forty, verse 112, speaking about our God says, "You have measured the waters in the hollow of his hand, meted out of it with the span," means the stretch of his hand. And comprehended the dust of the earth and the mess. He didn't just know what it was, but he comprehended it. And weighed the mountains in scales and the hills in abouts. So one thing, it would be pretty, I would say, it would be fairly impressive for somebody to tell you exactly what this mountain range weighed behind the church. That would be impressive. If you could do that, and I'm sure scientifically somebody could say, well, that rock or that mountain is made out of this and this and this. We can calculate by the size and by the width, the height, the depth. We calculated that mountain weighed X amount of pounds. But it doesn't say that he weighed the mountains. It says he weighed an escape. That means you just picked something up. You put it on this side. So if you could put the mountains in a scale, what would you have to have on the other side to be able to determine how heavy that was? Now, we get on a scale that just has one set of numbers that are always disappointed in, right? You stand on that scale, and that's still just measured Q. But a scale in Isaiah's day would have been something hell here. On this side, you put this weight. And then on this side, you stacked things to be able to say, well, that weighs thirty ounces or whatever. So in my mind, is there anything big enough for God to be able to put on this side to balance that out? All I can think of is I can just see God holding that scale. Put some outs here, and maybe I should do this. Put some outs here, and then he just takes his finger and just pushes it down on this side and says, yeah, that's about twenty-eight billion pounds. And the reason I say that is this, we have a big God.
Amen.
I don't know if I could say anything more important to you this week than we have a great and mighty God.
Amen.
And compared to what every other religion has, compared to, listen, their champions, most of them are laying in a tomb or they're laying in a sarcophagus or they are somewhere that they can be seen. Our God got up on the third day, but he is a living great God. And so he is bigger than all of your problems. Look, your problem does not do as big as that mountain. And if he can weigh that mountain, he knows exactly what you have going on.
Amen.
So I'll just say, I think the greatness of God, and just so impressed. All right, if you take in, believe in Mark and Isaiah forty, we'll go to First Kings, chapter nineteen. And it's good to see a couple of preachers here tonight. Appreciate them being here, they're gonna have to do that. And especially on Friday night, this Friday evening. And we are gathered in church, remember to be here than in a bar.
Amen.
Yeah, and go home with something more than that. And I just hate that I think that I may have preached this message down the bar. If I did, you're gonna get the rewinding.
I'll hear it again, brothers.
That's good. So, um, so First Kings, chapter nineteen. You'll read just a little bit, and I wanna kind of set the picture first. So Elijah has taken and done battle on top of Mount Carmel with the prophets of Baal and the groves, and he has been victorious. Called down fire from heaven at prayer, sixty-three words. And then the end of three and a half year famine. He goes and he prays and he sees a little hand in the shape, or a little cloud in the shape of a man's hand. And God sends rain after having not rained for three and a half years. He runs to the palace ahead of King Ahab, who's driving his chariot there. And when he gets to the palace, chapter nineteen, verse one, and Ahab told Jezebel all that Elijah had done. So Ahab gets to the palace and he tells Jezebel everything that Elijah had done. And with all how he had slain, all the prophets with the sword, then Jezebel sent a messenger unto Elijah saying, "So let the gods do to me and more also. If I may not thy life, is the life of one of them by tomorrow about this time." And when he saw that, he arose and went for his life and came to Beer Shiva, which belonged to Judah, and there and left his servant there. But he himself went a day's journey into the wilderness and came and sat down under a jewry tree. And he requested for himself that he might die. I want you to think about that. The victory on Mount Carmel. And now in verse number four, he is asking God, would you just take my life? It's a huge swing. And said, "Is enough thy war, take away my life, for I am not better than my fathers." And he lay and slept under a jewry tree. Behold, then an angel touched him and said unto him, "Arise and eat." And he looked and behold, there was a cave baked on the coals and a pool of water in his head. And he did eat and drink and laid him down again. And the angel of the Lord came again the second time and touched him and said, "Arise and eat, because the journey is too great for thee." Now, if you wanna underline the phrase, "The journey is too great for thee," what I'm gonna speak about tonight is being overwhelmed. And really, the idea of the journey is too great for thee, it pairs with the word overwhelmed. When you're overwhelmed, you are crushed by the weight or the breaking numbers of something that you cannot contain. When I think about that, I think about the fires in California and then the North Carolina. And what happened is there were so many fires going, so many acres burning, and all kinds of help being offered, but people were losing their homes. They were losing a lifetime of building things. And I'm certain that 911 got calls on a regular basis saying, hey, can you come and help us? And they probably hadn't said this, we're doing everything we know to do. We have mobilized the National Guard. We have brought in other fire fighting agencies. And there is more fire than we have the ability to fight. And it was just overwhelming, overwhelming to see things go up in flames like that. And what I would say is to God's people, the journey is too great for thee. And I've gotten that sentence, "The journey is too great for God." There is nothing too great for God.
Amen.
But the journey may be too great for you and I. And what I wanna kind of, just kind of point out to you is this, there are times that we are overwhelmed, you're overwhelmed. Like this crowd right now, I'm sure some of y'all saying, no, I mean, I would never, not a day in my life would I ever have more in my cup coming in than I can hold. I just keep sending, I'm good. That is probably the result of watching too much Joel Osteen. Because that is not reality. The reality is that we many times are overwhelmed for different reasons. Maybe it's because you have an enemy and an adversary like Ahab. Jezebel wants to take his life. So you're overwhelmed. Maybe that's the reason that he is having such difficulty. And because of that, because of that, he is totally overwhelmed by what's going on in his life. Sometimes we have enemies, we have adversaries. Certainly the devil's our adversary. But sometimes we get overwhelmed for other reasons, like running a business or perhaps trying to raise children. In fact, raising children is just so simple that really we would never need anybody to come along beside us and help us at all, right? That's what we got now. We have all the books that are out there on us. We already understand how to do that. I would say this, many times a mother feels completely overwhelmed trying to raise their children. Or maybe sometimes it's ministry. Ministry, totally overwhelmed. There's more coming in than I can get out. Maybe responsibilities that you have. Maybe you have something new at work, or maybe it's a disease that you've been diagnosed. I know it was overwhelming to hear that my mother had been diagnosed with AML, which is acute myeloid leukemia, and given four to six weeks' treatment. That's hard to hear.
Yep.
Really hard to hear. Maybe it's somebody that died in your family. You had a death in your family. Maybe it was a child. You know, it's really difficult for parents to bury a child. The other way around, children burying parents is a noble flow of life. But for a parent to bury a child, overwhelming. And then to bury a spouse or bury a father or a mother, still, it's very overwhelming to think about those things. And they begin to push us in ways that stretch us beyond what we feel like that we're capable of handling. And that happens in the Bible. Maybe it's the death that you owe. Maybe it's an event. All I'm just saying is this tonight, what I'm trying to set up at the very beginning is this, that being overwhelmed is a common occurrence for God's children. And I want you to hear that again. Being overwhelmed is a common occurrence for God's children. The reason I say that at the end of chapter eighteen and verse forty-six, Elijah has a great victory. And the Bible, and the hand of the Lord was on Elijah. God's hand is on Elijah. And he has seen a great victory. And we rejoice over the victory. I was thinking, I was, we were singing about victory in Jesus. How many God-lads you really got to say?
Amen.
What you got to really say? That you don't have to worry about hell. That's why I said you don't have to worry about it at all.
Come on.
But there are things that happen to God's children that people get overwhelmed. I think about Luke chapter ten, and Jesus looks at Martha and he says, "Martha, Martha, thou art careful and troubled about many things." She's overwhelmed. And here Elijah is a mighty prophet, Elijah, a mighty man of God. Now, not somebody off the internet. This is a man of God, a mighty man of God is saying, "Lord, I am not better than my fathers, but just please take my life." He is overwhelmed in this moment. But that's not, that's not, that's something strange that I want you to see. That's Psalm sixty-one, probably one of the most spiritual in life, in my opinion. Psalm sixty-one, David, very spiritual man, very spiritual. I mean, God used him to write songs and minister to us today. And certainly, a man after God's own heart, God described him as the sweet songs of his. And all I'm saying is David, David was a godly man, a godly man. But if you look there in Psalm sixty-one, verse number one, look at it. Hear my cry, O God, attend unto my prayer. Why, from the end of the earth I cry to thee when my heart is overwhelmed. Lead me to the rock that is higher than I.
Amen.
I don't know that it's true or accurate. But there are people that say this was written while David was in exile after his son wanted to take his life. How many of you would say that your son wanted to take your life? If your child wanted to take your life, that would be overwhelming. That could they do that? David was a boy that wanted to take his life. And he's on the run and here he said, "When my heart is overwhelmed," not "if," but "when my heart is overwhelmed, lead me to the rock that is higher than I." He says it again in Psalm one forty-two and Psalm one forty-three. What I'm saying is, if David got overwhelmed, then you should not think it strange when you get overwhelmed. If Elijah, mighty man of God, was overwhelmed, you shouldn't think it strange when you are overwhelmed by things like. Look at it one more time. Look at Second Corinthians, chapter one, Second Corinthians, chapter one. Many people say that Paul is the greatest Christian and the use that's for the church. I'm not gonna bait that with you. I'm just gonna say that he certainly was great in the use of God and he certainly gave many things helpful to the church. But if you look in Second Corinthians, chapter one, look at verse number seven. "And our hope of you is steadfast knowing that as are ye the takers of the suffering." "And our hope of you is steadfast, knowing that as are ye the takers of the suffering, so shall he be also the consolation." Look at verse eight. "Where we would not, brethren, have you ignorant of our troubles, which came to us in Asia, that we were pressed out of measure, above strength, insomuch that we despaired even a life." That's the same thing that Elijah said. So in Second Corinthians one eight, the Holy Spirit is allowing you to see in the life of probably, again, the greatest Christian of the New Testament church, if you, if you want to say that, that he was pressed out of measure, that there was more happening in his life than he could contain, to the point that it was above the strength that he had, that he despaired even a life, exactly what Elijah said. He is in the same place that Elijah is in. And, and all I'm just saying tonight is this, guys, we need to stop having the idea that we always have everything under control, that everything is going great. I mean, listen, how many times has somebody asked you, "How are you doing?", and you say, "I'm doing fine?", and it is the biggest lies you can say. I have watched people come in the church, I have a lot of people come into church, and they look swerved away, look, just because you have a suit on, which I don't, not a problem against that at all, just because you have a dress on, just because you have dressed the occasion, when you come in with a smile on your face, does not mean everything in life is going well. The other thing, my, I remember my wife, we, we were talking one day after church, and she, she, she was laughing, I said, "What happened there?" She said, "Well, it's summer school." She said, "I always ask kids if they have a prayer request." Well, the children raised their hands, said, "Yeah, I, I've got a prayer request." "What was that?" She said, "Well, I, I, I need you to pray for my mommy and dad." "Well, why?" "Well, they fought all the way to church this morning." And then she said it, and mom won. And the child was being honest, but I, I think when they came in the door, they did not come in the door, banging the hell out of them, scowling at one another, they came in, we got swerved away, we're all good. And I, and I know as a pastor, past it thirty years, that you're supposed, I used to say, sit high in the sun. I'm not rattled, I'm, I'm not bothered, I'm fine, I'm all right exactly where I am, but that really, that is not an accurate depiction of the Christian life.
Come on.
Again, unless you believe Joel Osteen, that this is your greatest life ever, that you all be wealthy, you all be healthy, that everything in your life just turns up roses as soon as you accept the Christ. You can go through this book and page after page after page of God's chosen, choice people.
Come on.
That had great difficulty, great suffering.
Come on.
Great trial. Hebrews, chapter eleven, ends, and others, and begins to tell the story of men that were not delivered, of people that suffered and wandered.
Come on, preach it.
There is a whole list of people that had great difficulty, and I'm telling you, it wasn't easy.
Come on.
They were overwhelmed, there was more in the bucket than they could carry. And I'm just saying tonight, Mom, if you're here and you're listening to me, I'm preaching to you. If there's more in the bucket that you could carry, stop feeling like you're doing something wrong. Stop feeling like, Mom, I'm just not spiritual. Stop feeling like, hey, listen, I just need to have more faith. I'm, I'm saying tonight that being overwhelmed is something that happens to God's children on a regular basis. Now, I'm glad to say this, when we get to heaven, we will never be overwhelmed again. We might be amazed. We might be awed by what we see. We might be overwhelmed with what we finally have in our, our ability to see with our eyes, but we will never be overwhelmed again. But not that we, not that we. So tonight, if you, if you're overwhelmed, if it's a little bit more than you can handle, it's okay. It's all right.
Amen.
Even if everybody thinks you got it swerved away, it's okay. It's just part of the Christian life. And the second thing I want you to see here, First Kings, chapter nineteen, is this. First Kings nineteen, verse number three, the Bible says, "And when he saw that, for what did he see?" Verse number two, "Then Jezebel sent a messenger unto Elijah, saying, 'So let the gods do to me and more also, if I may not thy life is the life of one of them by tomorrow about this time.'" So Jezebel threatened to kill him. All right, but then look at verse number three, "And when he saw that," I think he saw Jezebel killing him. I think he, in his mind, saw that wicked woman, Jezebel, taking his life. And all I'm saying about this is, that is not something he got from God. That didn't come from God, I mean, that probably came from the devil. And all I'm saying, being overwhelmed sometimes is about our uncertainty of the future. How many of you, oh, but, um, let's see, Mike, just get, get down here with you for a minute. We were honest. How many times have you seen something, thought something, feared something, that was going to happen, that did not happen? Is anybody doing like that?
Been there, done that.
And you spent time worried about it, fretting over it. This, I, this has been so many years ago, I flew to the island of St. Lucia preaching meetings, and as I was getting ready, things that just, I mean, there were so many things that happened that were odd, like, there was a special kind of car that I would buy my wife. I went to Hallmark to buy it, they had the last one. I asked them, "How come there's only one? We're discontinuing the series." Okay. And then other things that I would do, it would be like, well, this is the final one. And then I had a dream, I had a dream that I didn't make it. I heard you say, "You can't die in your dreams." I can't. If you can't, I can. I can, I'm gonna wake up. But I, listen, and, and I had got it in my mind that I was not gonna make it through that. I'm talking about, and I'm fretting about, and this, and then the word I stayed that year, they put me in a house, and I could see the planes taking off from the airport out over top of that water. And, and you know, you think, oh, beautiful scenery, no, not me, I'm thinking, yeah, when you get on yours, you're going down, buddy. And I'm thinking, in my mind, I already had it swerved away, to, to the point, this is what I did, when I got on the plane, getting ready to leave, I had a stack of tracks, I should do it all the time, but I had a stack of tracks in my hand, and I thought, everybody on the plane's getting a track today, because this is my last day. So I was going, I was saying, here, there's one for you, and I'm just giving track here, here, this, this, this. And everybody's, I'm, I'm talking to everybody about, and as we're taking off, it's not blue sky that day, no, it's cloudy out there. And we get into it, it's shaking and bouncing around, and I think, yeah, this is. And then the little, you know, the little video, the thing that they, back in the, when the video, it was just an audio thing, they would play an audio thing, talking about, you know, under your seat is a flotation device and all that stuff, we had got stuck, and it's hitting, it's just repeating the same thing. Under your seat is a, under your seat is a.
That's it, I'm talking, I'm done.
And I saw it.
Amen.
I have to tell you that about my mother, I had a comfort for you, you better love your mom, because what would we have been this hurt by this year? And all I'm saying is, the fear of an uncertain future many times causes us to get overwhelmed for something that hasn't happened yet. It's not something that is actually taking place. And the Bible, listen, I believe the Bible's clear, the Bible's clear, it tells us, Jesus, when he taught his disciples prayer, he said, listen, "Give us this day our daily bread." And the Lord of James, it talks about sufficient is the evil for the day they're up. Take no fault for them all. Now, I, I understand the proverb says that the prudent man perceives the evil and passes it off, he understands that, he, he hides it himself, I get that. But I'm just saying practically, there is so much going on in our world in that present moment, in this moment, that Elijah's in. I, I don't even believe, maybe if he would have walked out and said, you know what, she may have threatened to kill me, I'm just gonna go back to that congregation, that was up on the top of Mount Carmel that said, didn't have. He is the God, I'm just gonna stand with them and let her come and have it with everybody to get to me, but he didn't do that, he didn't stay in the moment. He got to seeing what she was gonna do to him. All I'm just saying, now, listen, don't let an uncertain future cause you to get out of the way.
Come on.
Because when he saw that, look what he did, look, he made, he took action, look at it. When he saw that, he arose and went for his life. So in other words, he saw something that hadn't happened, and it was not from God. But when he saw that, when he saw it in his mind, then he took action. Then he did something. And all I would say is this, the third point is this, being overwhelmed many times comes from an uncertain future. Being overwhelmed is a natural occurrence for God's people. But thirdly, you cannot, you cannot resolve being overwhelmed by running away. Want you to look at it again. "When he saw that, he arose and went for his life." He's running. He's running. Now, you know what, he's good at running. Back in the verse forty-six, he ran so fast, he outran Ahab in a chariot in the running to the palace. Boom, would anybody say that's pretty impressive? You're talking about a man of God that girds himself and runs in a pouring down rain, outruns a chariot that the king is in and meets him at the palace. He's good at running, and you know what, some of us are good at running. We're good at running away from the things that we fear when we get overwhelmed. Can, can I say this tonight, listen, sometimes it's good to run. When Potiphar, when Potiphar's wife came and approached Joseph, he was right to run. Can I give an amen to that?
Amen, get going.
He didn't need to try to pull some theological verse, or, he did not, I'm gonna, just in my own termination of my character, he ran. He got away from that situation, that's a good thing, that's a good thing. But here Elijah is running, and, and Elijah, he runs, the prey runs too, and came to Beersheba, that's a good place to run. In fact, in Beersheba in your Bible, Beersheba was a well that was dug by Abraham, and their seven lambs were sacrificed. And all I'm just saying, that it is a good thing sometimes to run back to Calvary. So I would say this, if you run from your problem, one of the places you should run to would be the cross of Jesus Christ, at the arms of the Lord Jesus Christ. Don't run away from that. In fact, listen, I'm listening to you, so many church people run from God and run from the church when things don't go the way they think they should.
Come on.
Things get outside of the banks, and it's not what they expected, it's not what I thought would happen, and God, I don't understand why you let that happen to us, and then they get bitter, they get angry, and they get, they get frustrated, and they run the wrong direction. And, and all I'm just saying, if you run anywhere, run to the church. Run to God's people, run to God, don't run away from him, run to him. I know, you can't outrun God anyway.
Come on.
Isn't that right? But here, then it goes on to say, "He came to Beersheba, which belonged to Judah." Now watch, he left his servant there, but he himself went a days' journey in the wilderness. So he's in Judah, good place. He's at Judah, but now he leaves his servant, and he goes a days' journey. He outran all the people that cared for him. In other words, he's running out by himself. And I think when we get overwhelmed, that is a bad place to be. Now, I, I understand where I am, I'm in Montana, I can, I told Willa Dunn years ago, I remember, we were, I don't know, we were out visiting, I went, we invited people to a meeting, I, I don't remember what was going on, but I tried to talk to somebody that was a, a, a citizen of this state, and they said, listen, "I moved out here to get away from people like you, I don't want to be bothered, okay, I get it, I understand." "That's why I have no neighbors for twenty miles." "Okay, I understand, we're just trying to buy your church." So I'm not, I still, I understand where I am. I'm just telling you, when you get all by yourself, you may end up making some things that aren't really good, and then you're best. He ran away, he's by himself. He's by himself, look where he is, he's under a juniper tree. Whole lot we said about that, and he's, he's under a juniper tree. By himself, overwhelmed, and running has not solved the problem. He's running from something that hasn't happened yet, he's running from Jezebel, and he's in the wilderness now, under a juniper tree, and things still are not better, because look what he said, "And he requested for himself that he might die." He wasn't able to outrun the problem. Now, I'm not saying Jezebel wouldn't have killed him, I'm not, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying that many times, when you get overwhelmed, whether it's a, a, whether it's some, some disease, or whether it's debt, or whether it's ministry, you cannot outrun those issues. And maybe I say it this way, changing locations does not change your problems.
Amen.
Right? Doesn't change your problems. They might change your circumstances and surroundings, but they don't change the things you're running away from. And all I'm saying is, here, he's now, he's under beneath the juniper tree, and he's asking God to take his life. And that's why he's taking his own life, he just says he's requesting himself that he might die, and you know, I, I think I can understand that a little bit. Um, it's been, we were trying to say, what, it's been seven, eight years since I've been here? Since my first visit? Yeah? When I was here last, I was pastoring, I think in Alabama, not in South Carolina. Or maybe Alabama's in South Carolina, I was pastoring in South Carolina. And my, my world just, has been totally turned upside down, I'm not pastoring. Last two years, I'm not, I'm not in the same role that I've been in all my life. Um, there were so many things that happened in my family within the space of about three months, that you're talking about being overwhelmed. And I have good friends that try to reach out, try to come to me, encourage me, but you, you get really, you get worn out. You get disappointed in yourself, you get alone. The Bible says he's he's been running, he's hungry, he's thirsty, he's overwhelmed, he's outed at that, he can't outrun what he's afraid. He can't outrun it, he can't put enough distance between him and Jezebel to feel comfortable in this soul. And I tell you tonight, many times you get overwhelmed, you cannot put enough distance between you and the issue to feel settled. And all I'm saying is then, the, the fourth point, and this may be my last one, I think this probably may be good enough for tonight. The Bible says that, "As he lay and slept under a juniper tree, behold, then an angel touched him and said unto him, 'Arise and eat.'" Here's, here's the fourth point, here's a, here's a really good, the heart of mine. Jesus is the only lasting solution
Yeah.
to being overwhelmed. I'm gonna say that again, Jesus Christ, Jesus Christ is the only lasting solution to being overwhelmed. It's not Mormon, it's not a new location, it's not a new spouse, it's not a new job. It, it's, it's not a new doctor, it's not a new treatment. The only solution to being overwhelmed comes from the Lord Jesus Christ, that last, and I want to look two things, if you would. Look, the Bible says in verse number five, "And as he lay and slept under a juniper tree." So he requested the Lord to take his life, but then the Lord let him sleep under a juniper tree. He let him sleep, look what the Bible says, the Bible says in verse number six, "And he did eat and drink, and laid him down again, second time." He's sleeping, and God allowed him to sleep. You know, I think it's a good thing probably to get the right amount of hours of sleep. How many of you think that you'd probably get anywhere from, oh, seven to nine hours of sleep a night? Can I shake your hand? How many people? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
I can't sleep that long.
Way less than that, so the rest of us, we get less sleep than we should. Sleep is definitely, how many of you enjoy sleeping? Some of y'all doing that tonight. Not physically, just mentally, you've been. Nobody's all.
Not around here.
Sleep, sleep is really important, and just let you understand that I do think that's, that, I know that's not spiritual, but God let him sleep. God could have wakened him right then and said, hey, Elijah, what are you doing running from that woman? Why are you afraid of her? You, I've just set down a fire on top of Mount Carmel, sixty-three words, burned up the stone, burned up the sacrifice, burned up the water, gave you a great victory, what in the world are you doing here? Could God have done that to you?
Yeah.
He couldn't have done that. But then he let him sleep.
Thank goodness.
And let me think about it in the Bible, you know, Peter is sleeping between two guards in prison, waiting for the day to go, to have his head cut off. And yet he's just sleeping. Jesus is asleep in a boat in a storm, the Bible says, in the hind of a parus ship, he is sleeping.
On a pillow.
And remember what I should say, is that the Bible says he gives his beloved sleep, and it might be good for you and I to understand, it might be a good thing for you and I to learn how to rest. The Bible says in Mark six thirty-one, "Come ye yourselves apart into a distant place and rest for a while."
Amen.
Sometimes you just need to rest. Your family needs to rest. In the ministry, you and I, there is never a place to rest. I mean, pastor, pastor picks me up, what time do you pick me up? I ignore it, twelve, one o'clock in the morning, we get to the house, he talks for a little while, then he goes to his house, goes to sleep probably around two thirty, ends up getting up in the morning, and what time? Woke up about three hours, no, no, twenty-four hours, seven days a week. I understand that, I get that. I understand, hey, Elijah, if you got business, if you're a business owner in here, I understand being busy. If you are a mother, late at night, early in the morning, somebody's in need. My, my wife, before I came, my, my middle daughter got so sick, she slept all through the night trying to help take care of her. And here's what I'm just saying, sometimes it's good for us just to rest as an individual. And I know that doesn't sound spiritual, but I'm telling you tonight, when you get overwhelmed, the Bible's very clear, God, God can give his beloved sleep. It might be good to be just to rest a little while. That's a whole lot better option than going down to the doctor and getting a new prescription. But that's what we like to do. Taking a course on how to deal with stress. They go rest, and that doesn't mean playing video games at three o'clock in the morning. Or bitching on something that they put on Netflix. It means resting. You know, I think it's good for a family to rest. It's good for husband and wife to rest. It's good for husband and wife to rest together. Well, this is, I can't. Preacher, you can get that right out of the Bible. Yeah, Bible says, and he lay down and slept, and then after he got fed, and he laid him down again.
Amen.
I think it's good for a church to rest. Oh my goodness, sometimes I feel like I need to go back to Carolina and apologize in church, because we had meetings that seemed like every mother in the boat. We had a national prayer conference, we had alumni days, we had the Bible, we had missions conference, we had graduation, we had meeting after meeting after meeting. And we had children's home, we had Christian school, we had a college, we had a radio, there was always something going on, till it was just so busy. Sometimes it's good for a church to rest, I don't think that's on Sunday. Good for a church just to kind of slow down, let's just take a little bit of a break. Let's just rest. I think it's good for a church and an individual and family, I think it's good for God's people every now and then just to do exactly what we see in the Bible, just to rest. God allowed him to rest. Can I get an amen now, brother?
Amen.
Being overwhelmed, the solution is Jesus, but he's allowing, he's allowing Elijah to rest. Preacher said, why do you keep saying Jesus, look at verse seven, the angel of the Lord came again the second time. I believe the angel of the Lord is Jesus. If you believe that, that's all right. The angel of the Lord is with Moses there, the burning Moses, and says, take off your shoes, you're on holy ground, what do you think holy about that bush or the ground? But there was something about who was standing on that.
Yeah.
And I believe the Lord is here taking care of his man of God. And he could, now he could have done what we do sometimes, he could have reviewed it. We had a young preacher that came to our church, his family had really been worn out on the mission field, church planning in the United States. They didn't get the support that they needed. And he had, he had little children, and he was burnt out, and when he got to our church, he came to come to our church because somebody had taken and started a fishbowl ministry. I mean, y'all ever heard of the fishbowl ministry? How about that? Yeah, so it took a fishbowl, let me get a record cassette tape, you ever heard of that? They would take and put cassette tapes on a fishbowl at different stores, convenience stores around the city which we live. And people could take it, they could pull a preaching tape out of that, he pulled a preaching tape out of that from the James Knox preacher, heard that, that it was at our church, showed up at our church at this time. And we found out that he'd been a church friend and was burnt out. And I taught him with, he was just broken tears, his wife, broken. And some of our people found out that he was a preacher and said, listen, if he's a pastor, how come he didn't come out and visitation? How come he's not here every service? How come he didn't come to prayer meet with everybody else? If he's a preacher, if he's a man of God, I'm finding out, I tell you why he's not there, because he's worn out. And you know that God worked on his heart, people were happening, that young man is back pastoring again, he's got a great church, I'm not gonna tell you where, because you might find it out, and I don't want them to be embarrassed. He's got a great church, God's working through him, because he finally got to rest, and I can think about another gentleman that's pastor right now in another state. Same thing, broken, just shattered, pastor of Lawrence Church, shattered, had been stabbed in the back, had been done horribly. And he came in, sat down, and I can remember both of them, one of them on a mission trip, and I believe, preacher, I believe God wants me back, and another guy came to me, said, can you meet me at Shoney's? And I said, okay, we met, anybody know where Shoney's is? It's kind of like, it's a place where you eat food, all right? He said, preacher, can we meet at Shoney's, met at Shoney's, and we started eating, and we'd met there before, and then he started, he started coming. And he said, I think it's time that I start moving back to a ministry again. So I started teaching in a little class in our church, not as a pastor. Because he had to rest. Because he didn't get reviewed. He didn't, he didn't get told he was failing by all of his friends and all the people around. I mean, Elijah could have had a whole lot of people saying stuff to him every day, God didn't do that. In fact, look what God did, this is amazing, the Bible says this, and he looked, and behold, there was a cake, excuse the first five, and he lay and slept under juniper tree, behold, then an angel touched him. Touched him, he just touched him. That's a real nice way to wake somebody up. In fact, look what the Bible says, it says in verse seven, and after he laid him down again, and the angel of the Lord came again the second time, and what? Texted him. My mother, that's where my mother operated, my mom would be, get up, she would say, Joel, honey, it's time to get up, you won't be late. My dad would come in and say, son, we gotta leave, better get up, get ready. He came back in the second time, it's gonna be.
Oh boy. Ain't that the truth?
My mom would come back and a half a dozen, I had a human snooze button. I'd be late. When I see the Lord.
And my wife, you know.
I see some tears out there. You know, I'm glad I have a God that is touched with a feeling like that. I have a God who knows our frame, that we're dust and we're vanity, and this man at his best state is altogether vanity. We are weak, we are not nearly as strong as we think, and we have a God that understands that and knows that, and I'm thankful for that. But he just touches him, he just touches him. Now, God's hand is already on it, verse forty-six of eighteen, but now he touches him again. And all I'm just gonna say about that is, listen, you guys that are in here tonight, I believe that you need God's touch when you are overwhelmed.
Amen.
You need something that is from heaven, a touch from heaven, and I'll show you that, put a mark right there in chapter nineteen, go back to Isaiah forty for just a minute, I know you know the verse. I know you know the verse. But I want you to see it, by the way, I, we will be finished, if you'll stay with me, another five more minutes, we'll be finished, all right?
Uh huh.
Five more minutes. The Bible says, verse twenty-eight, Isaiah forty, hast thou not known, hast thou not heard, that the everlasting God, the Lord, the creator, the image of the earth, fainted not, neither is weary. We might get overwhelmed, and we might get tired, God never gets weary. There is no searching, there's no staying, watch, he gives power, he gives power to the faith. And the then that have no might, he increases strength. Even the youth shall faint and be weary, and the young men shall only fall, but they that wait upon the Lord shall renew their strength, they shall mount on the wings of eagles, they shall run and not be weary, they shall walk and not faint. That is God putting his strength into his children. I would say, like, you may be overwhelmed, God's not.
Right. Come on.
You, you may be out of banks, you may be pressed out of measures, God is not, God is not in heaven, wringing his hands over the condition on the earth right now, or in the conditions of the churches. God is just as powerful, just as strong, just as mighty, just as wise as he's ever been, there is no variance in him.
Amen.
And he knows how to put strength into you. That's why the Bible says, we're to stand, but I'm gonna be strong in the Lord. My strength comes from the Lord. When you get overwhelmed, probably go on and look it up Oprah, and a series that says, well, what to do when you're overwhelmed, it's probably not where you're gonna get your help from, you're probably gonna get it from God instead of here.
Come on.
And all I'm just saying is that he touched him, so God, God has the ability to put something in you that you don't have on your own. You cannot, you cannot meditate it up, you cannot think it up, you cannot convince yourself of it up. God, God has the ability to put into you something you don't have in your own ability to find.
Amen.
And that's strength when you're overwhelmed. Last thing, and I'm finished, first Kings nineteen, I said last thing about that two, three times, but I'm doing it. So not only did God let him rest, but he touched him, but he's happy, the Bible says. Verse six, and he looked, and behold, there was a cake baking on the coals, and a cruise of water at his head, and he did eat and drink, and laid him down again. Sure is a cake.
Crazy, huh?
And a cruise of water. How can you do with me that that did not come from our sense of war? Right? I mean, God had already fed Elijah a number of ways, he used the whitewater to feed him up. He used the ravens to feed him up, and they all had meat and bread, all right? But here, here he is wakened, and there is a cruise of water, and there is a cake of coals that is sitting right there, that is something hot, something, maybe like something hot and fresh.
Come on.
Something hot, and I'm just saying, this did not come from me, this came from heaven. This is something God provided for him. And by the way, this water here, it didn't have to be in a bottle, it didn't have any particles of plastic in it, it didn't have any fluoride in it, it came from, it was water from a whole nother place. God, God gave him something better than anything else on the planet, and the cake, the cake was something that God made him, listen to me, the whole church helped me, Lord. God, God fed him with something that was going to help his soul, not just his body.
Come on.
God cares for your body, but he also cares about your soul, and Elijah, Elijah's trouble on the inside. And he says, I got something that I need you to eat, you may, you may not agree with me on this, but I'm telling you right now, when you come to church, you're on church on Friday night, I hope tonight you leave knowing that I gave you something from heaven, not from a man.
Come on, amen preacher.
All I do tonight is just preach a message that I failed in what I came to do. I did not come just to preach a message, I didn't come just to see my friends, I came for God, I wanted God to help me to help you, to use me to help your heart and your soul. And you may be, again, you may be pressed out of measure, you may, listen, it may be so heavy right now, but I'm telling you, there's a God in heaven that can give you what you need that nobody else can.
Amen.
I believe it comes through preaching.
That's right.
This book wasn't written by me, and this was written by God. God can take a man, I've been there, I've been to a service when I was so low, and I was, listen, so discouraged, and so disappointed, and just thought, this is a wreck, God, happily. And a guy get up and opened his Bible and start preaching, and God just start pouring in some.
Yeah.
Pour something down inside my soul that helped me when I walked out, but I was a whole lot different than when I came in.
That's right.
Do you believe that?
Bring it up.
Do you really believe that God can give something to your soul that can help you when you're pressed out of measure? He did for Elijah.
Amen.
He gave Elijah help when there was nobody around to offer it. Well, I'm telling you, brother, there's sometimes, there's nobody around. You have to sit and be overwhelmed. And sometimes that's not a good thing, unless God shows up, then when he shows up, he knows how to be able to move the two souls on. Now, I said tonight, it's a common occurrence for people to be overwhelmed with all glory. And I said, you can't outrun those moments of being overwhelmed. And the solution is Jesus Christ. Yes, you ought to rest, yes, let him touch your soul with something from heaven. Bible says that Elijah rose and did eat and drink, and went on the strength of that meat forty days and forty nights. Don't you wish there was a clip bar, a protein bar, you could do that? Not a protein bar, but there is something that God can give you, that he can put in here, that can help you go on the strength of it when you get overwhelmed. Which is about it.
Thank you, Lord.
Just, just so you and I, just to be honest with what God, in the Bible, I wonder how many of us just, you know what, I understand where it's like to be overwhelmed. I'm born again, I'm on my way to heaven, but I'm telling you, here's my hand, I know it's like to be overwhelmed, I want to have my hand. Just about it. Mine's up there. So what do I do when I get to that place? Well, running from it won't help you. But there's a God in heaven that knows how to be able to put something in you and in your heart that matters. So our sister don't play, if you believe what you heard preached, if you're in that place, maybe you're not there now, maybe you just get a bat in your seat, slip it along, say, God, I sure need something. As a mother, as a mistress, somebody dealing with some kind of tragedy, maybe I just get out of your seat and say, God, I sure need something. I encourage you, then more, you want to hear the message, get it from God. God, I need your help. And heavy, and hard, uncertain. Fearful about the future. I'm not going back. Attempt to quit, attempt to turn yourself away. Lord, we thank you for this example in the Bible, one of your men, a choice man, Bible man. Who, who you give a picture of being overwhelmed, yeah, Lord, the solution. Thank you for being a God that doesn't just point out our problems and our weaknesses and frailty, but Lord, for also giving us the solution. I pray tonight, I pray tonight, your people that are here, that you'll help them. You'll help them more not to run from things that they cannot outrun. You'd help the Lord tonight to be able to find the strength that only you can give, the help from heaven that can feed the soul and put strength into this one that nobody else can. Thank you, Lord, for helping us this side of the road, we look forward to when we can put off this old, this path of life, the burdens of this life, and be able to enjoy the benefits and fruits of our labor. And Lord, we look forward to that thing, but right now, we appreciate you being a God, mindful of your people, and we thank you for it, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Thank you, brother, listen, everyone's gonna be overwhelmed at the same time or another, okay, and if you get an opportunity, come up to the altar, we just don't do that, but you know, at the same time, the invitation's never closed. You need to pull Brother Joel aside, he'd be glad to talk to you, and if you've been in ministry, you don't get overwhelmed, it's all right. You know what that's all about, it happens, I mean, you're supposed to know it, I mean, when you get up here. There's a way we can be a help to people, so that's how we want, we want to be a help to people, and sometimes there's some of those things that's what helps, and that is, just go ahead and get a sleep for a while. I think the preacher was thinking this, all the armies of Israel were overwhelmed by the lives of his sons. One ran toward the wall. That's pretty neat, isn't it? And God carefully put those words, David ran toward the wall, that's not David, that's the strength of God in him.
Amen.
We can be a help, you let us have a chance, we have refreshments in the house right here, I hope you can stay, and then tomorrow night, what time? Six o'clock service, four o'clock chow, all right? So if you can come, please do so, this staff will be special.